Good evening, welcome to the Norwood Board of Selectmen's Meeting for the 10th of September 2019. This evening, we're starting at 6:30 because it's our intent to go into an executive session for about a half hour, come back on at 7 o'clock, if that's okay with everybody. So, do I have a motion to, we're in our own session for a regular session, do I have a motion to go into executive session?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor, unanimous, Mr. Maloney?
Aye.
Mr. Howard?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Plasko?
Yes.
And the board, Chair rather, votes yes, so we'll be going into executive session, and we're gonna come back as quickly as possible at 7 o'clock. Thank you all. Tom, it's tough. Okay, we are back in session. If you remember, we started with an executive session at 6:30, but what I failed to do at that time was to tell you the reason we were going into executive session. We were going into executive session for purpose number three, which is to discuss collective bargaining issues and entail the Norwood Fire Fundations Union. So with that said, we are now open our regular meeting, if I could, with a pledge of allegiance, followed by a moment of silent meditation or prayer.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all, and please be seated. Tonight, we have a appointment, which was scheduled for 7 p.m., a little bit late, with Moderna Inc. here in Norwood regarding a tax increment financing agreement, and I have with me to my right Selectman Plasko, who was also the Vice Chairman of the Economic Development Committee, and at this time, I'd like to turn it over to him.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Economic Development Committee has met with Moderna over their request for a TIF agreement with the town. In a moment, I'm going to turn it over to Lynn Tokarczyk, from Business Development Strategies, working with Moderna on this matter, to introduce the Moderna team, ask them to make a little presentation, remind people what Moderna's all about, and what their first year here in Norwood has been like, and whatever else they'd like to add. But before I do that, I want to recognize the members of the Economic Development Committee. Steve Costello is our Chairman. Steve, for personal reasons, chose to recuse himself from this matter, so he's not here with us this evening. But Alan Slater's here, and I think missing is also Scott Murphy, and Tom Lynn, who are ably assisted by our Town Planner and Economic Development Director, Paul Halkiotis, and General Manager, Tony Mizuko. Also, take a moment, I was asked to explain for the public what a TIF is, or a Tax Increment Financing Agreement. I'm gonna do it in a quick, down and dirty layman's, so if Paul or Lynn think I've missed an important point, please add it when I finish here. Basically, a tax instrument financing agreement is allowed by state law for communities to enter into an agreement with a firm to basically forgive a portion of the new assessed value added to the property that they will occupy. As I said, this is applied to the new added assessed value of the property. The basic value of the property that's agreed to before we enter into the TIF agreement is still always taxed at the full 100% of this is being taxed today. So it only applies to new additional added value. And there's really no magic formula as to how a TIF is determined, what the percentages might be, and how it will be structured. It's basically negotiated between the community to what they feel the business brings to the community, offers the community, and what the business needs from their financial perspective to go forward with their business and expansion plans. And agreement of this nature is also, has to come before the Board of Selectmen, has to be recommended by the Selectmen to town meeting, and has to be finally approved by town meeting. So it's a whole townwide involvement in making the decision to take this step. Is that clear enough? Do we need anything more details?
Just Lynn Tokarczyk, this is a state program administered by the Mass Office of Business Development, is known as the Economic Development Center Program, and a TIF can be a minimum of five years, a maximum of 20 years, and a minimum exemption of 5%, maximum of 100%.
Very good.
So with that, Mr. Chairman, if you would allow, I'd like to turn it back over to Lynn, and then, when they have finished with their presentation, give you a rundown on the process that we went through, and finally, the recommendation from the Economic Development Committee to the Selectmen.
Thank you, Mr. Plasko. Lynn?
Great. Thank you so much. Again, I am Lynn Tokarczyk, Government Tax Incentives Consultant for Moderna. I am here with Nick Cornet, Site Head for Norwood, Kirsten Jacharo, who's the HR Business Partnerships, and then Venkam Patel, who is the Senior Director of Facilities and Engineering. I'd also like to recognize a guest here this evening, Tom O'Rourke, who is the President and CEO of the Nippon-Sud River Regional Chamber. And so, I'm very pleased to be back here this evening also. I was here three years ago, 2016, for the first Moderna project, the first TIF project. And as you'll hear a little later on, that that's been very successful, and they've exceeded their obligations. So, but I wanted to thank the Board of Selectmen for inviting us here this evening, and for Tony Mizuko for his leadership in encouraging the company to expand, to further expand again, and create a campus environment here in the town of Norwood. Also, for the EDC, for their unanimous approval of the TIF proposal. And so with that, we have a brief slide presentation that I believe that Christina will view, will show. Okay. And so we'd like to present this basically in three phases, the background and history of Moderna, what their proposed expansion plans are, and then, of course, the intent to apply for tax incentives. So I'll turn it right over to Nick Cornet to begin.
Okay. Thank you very much, Lynn. As I mentioned, my name is Nick Cornet. I'm the Site Head, so the Director of the Senator, and I'd like just to begin with thanking you for giving us the chance here to present our case, also to thank you, Tony, for the help and some of the coaching and bringing this here today. I was thinking of starting just a little bit with a little bit of background on the company, okay? We are a young clinical biotech company, started in 2010. We are specialized in mRNA research and therapies development, and currently, we're doing a clinical production here in the facility in Norwood.
Explain what mRNA means, please.
Yes. So mRNA is...
M is for messenger?
Yes, M is for messenger. RNA is a strand that is found in human cells.
Human?
Yes. So it's, we are the front runners really, or leading company in the world with mRNA research, okay? Are based in Cambridge, and also have the operations now that moved in 2016 in Norwood. As a company, we have a policy really focused strongly on corporate social responsibility. And in Norwood, we, a strong focus that we have, and we're developing more and more, is around environmental initiatives. Just recently, we had a cleanup initiative that we organized in the site. And also, we are increasing in many ways and developing a lot our community involvement, okay? In a few minutes, you'll see some of the work that we're doing just now, and that we've done in the past, and also some things that we're developing for the future with the town of Norwood and the citizens of Norwood also. We have strategic collaborators with the company, so our therapies are attracting a lot of interest, and of course, we have some partnerships with some big pharma companies, AstraZeneca, Merck, to name a few, also some governmental agencies, BARDA and DARPA, and also the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation for some of our therapies also. Plus, also some institutions, university, and research internationally. So we have an international focus, also a strong business, United States or country focus also. And just recently, as you know, we've invested quite heavily in the facility in Norwood. This was a very nice project, very well executed, and what we have now is a state-of-the-art facility, I would say one of the most advanced terms of digital and technologies for our type of businesses in the world. This was recognized just recently. We won the Facility of the Year Award, given by the ISPE, which is the International Society for Pharmaceutical Engineering. It's a very prestigious award for us, and actually, we are up now for the Facility of the Year Award from the ISPE, which will be revealed end of October in Las Vegas. So we have here a jewel of a facility that was built, and it's currently in startup, and it's working very well. So what we propose is looking into the future space to expand, okay? We currently, we occupy the Upland or Moderna Way 1 facility, that has 200 square feet. It's clinical space, so clinical manufacturing. And due to the company's expanded, projected growth, or potential growth, we decided, we did a strategic decision not too long ago, to secure the building which is in 200 Moderna Way, or Tech Drive Way, just north of us. It's the old UTI building, okay? So we secured the lease there, and we're considering different opportunities. We are looking really for office space, for research space, for potential growth in manufacturing. We have a series of options within the state, out of state, and also internationally. And we have different also strategies. For us, securing the building gives us really alternatives, that could be either from low-level warehousing to more high-tech research and development and manufacturing in the future, So the lease that we have secured, another 229 square feet. It could be, like I said, very good lab space, office space, or warehousing. If we go more towards the business case for laboratory and research and office spaces, we are looking at a potential investment of $50 million in two phases. The first phase would be around $17 million, and then the next phase will come at a later phase. Right now, we have access to about a third of the building, which is 88,000 square feet, and that would be really our first phase move, which could start in a few months. The second, or the two-thirds of the buildings currently are occupied still by UTI, and they will vacate, or vacate the building in July next year. At that point, we have to consider what we will do with the remainder of the surface, and there's potentially to continue investing up to this $50 million, or to do other business models like this, okay? However, we would like to take the opportunity of having these two buildings, the nice land that we have there, the forest, to create kind of a campus type of environment. Our employees currently in Norwood really enjoy the facility, the surroundings, the community, and we think that this could be a win-win really for us, for the employees, and also for Norwood. An investment really, if we go the way of offices, lab, research, and development, we are looking at retaining and we're relocating approximately 250 jobs. There would be a relocation from our current Cambridge offices to the new building, and also a potential of about 100 new permanent full-time jobs over the arch of the next 10 years or so. Here, we're looking at high-end jobs, so it's engineering, scientists, digital IT, office administrations also. And it doesn't really touch also all the connected or the indirect services and some of the contracting companies that we could also impact favorably in the territory, I think. This would be, of course, in addition to the current 240 full-time jobs that we have in the current facility, okay? And all the temporary construction jobs and subcontractors that a project like this would develop or would create within the area. So I think it's a nice, it's a nice potential project. We certainly will be interested in moving that way. And just a note on the community involvement that I mentioned earlier. You know, we started a project in 2016, and really, our focus as an organization was to execute, we had to do it very quickly. And I would say in the last 12 to 18 months, we started developing our community involvements. We have, just recently, actually, yesterday, we had the visit, the second time visit of the principal of the high school, the local Norwood High School, Hugh Gallagher. We're developing a project, a potential project with them, which is to become a flagship partner for some of the Innovation Pathway programs that the school wants to develop. So I think it's a very good outlet, we're a biotech, we're science, it could be very interesting for high school students. We have internship programs, STEM programs, college co-ops, we've also held job fairs, we had involvement in the farmer's market. We also are, have involvement and participation in the Nippon-Sud River Chamber of Commerce, the Chamber now, right? And Nippon-Sud also valid TMA member. So this is just a beginning for us. We want to continue really, continuing our involvement and having a very positive community impact in Norwood.
Okay, so the next slide is on the economic impact, and Nick?
Yes, okay. So we've evaluated that, as of now, we've invested, or we've participated in local economy about $1.5 million in...
How do you come up with that number?
It's a difficult number to come up with, but if you look at some of the indirect spending in retail establishments that we have, some of the restaurants, and the, some of the catering that we've ordered, some of the corporate services that we've used locally with local vendors, and also some of the local industrial services.
And employees as well?
Yes, and the employees also that live in the area. Of course, you expand the number of people, you expand our business here, I think we can go and get even more. It's proportional, isn't it?
This is more of a conservative number.
Yes.
So some of the, just to kind of wrap up and recap, so the benefits to Norwood. You know, Moderna is now designated as the largest life science company in the town of Norwood, so that's very exciting, since they have located here, and all the spending and their community involvement, I think it shows the type of corporate culture that they've developed in the partnerships, as Nick mentioned, with the school, the superintendent, and beyond. And thanks to Tony for arranging and creating those partnerships for Moderna, it's very, we really appreciate that. So it would also renovate an underutilized building. You know, if Moderna doesn't revitalize this to lab and office space, you know, it would just, it would totally be underutilized. It will increase tax revenue coming into Norwood, increase meals and hotel taxes as well, with all the spending that their employees are doing, as well as the company. So there's an infusion of cash coming back into the town of Norwood. Of course, it will generate permit fees, substantial permit fees. So it, overall, it would be a positive impact on the local businesses and community. So basically, the last slide, and Bill Plasko did a great job on what a TIF is, so that was great. And so basically, as you know, the, Moderna has received their first TIF back in 2016, and that's just about to start, based on the terms of the original TIF agreement. But they have exceeded their investment numbers already, and they have exceeded their job creation numbers, which was over a period of time, and here we are, just a couple years out. They've already exceeded their obligations, so I think that's a testament to, you know, what the future looks like here in Norwood for Moderna. And as Bill mentioned, the process for the tax incentives, it does need a Board of Selectmen recommendation to town meeting. Town meeting has the final local vote, and then, of course, it does need to go to the state, because this is a state-administered program. But in between that, should the board vote favorably this evening, the company is also planning on hosting a community outreach session in a couple of weeks to educate the voters, the representatives of town meeting. So there's more to come on that, but I just wanted to point that out. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to just, if I may, give a little rundown, if not for the board, the public, what went on in, considering this request for a TIF from Moderna. First, they reached out to the town, Mr. Mizuko, Mr. Halkiotis, and myself then had a brief informal meeting with them. That was, I think, on July 25th. We recommended that they send in a formal request to the town, which they did on the 30th of the month, which then we turned it over to the Economic Development Committee that has met twice in between the first meeting with Moderna. In between the first meeting and the second meeting, or at the first meeting, I should say, they presented a proposal for a TIF, which was perhaps a little high in our opinion, but they explained their reasoning, and the committee voted to authorize myself and Mr. Mizuko to see if in between that first meeting and second meeting, we could in fact negotiate an agreement acceptable to both parties. And we did that. We had a couple of meetings and a couple of phone calls, and we did some additional work on both our ends, and we came back with a, an agreement that altered the original request by the company substantially, and increased it a little bit over what our current TIF on the first building has been at. We also recommended that they consider doing a declining scale from the first year to the 10th year, so that instead of a flat, like 50% every year, the goal ended up being that 50%, I just mentioned, but instead of doing a flat 50% every year, that it started a higher number in decline. So in this case, as you see in the actual agreement, there's a chart, it starts at 90% in the first year, but it's really of only 70% of the value of the new investment, and that doesn't kick until the third year. And then, it goes down from there to 20% in the 10th year. The result of that is actually, we believe, very beneficial to both the company and the town. It provides the company with a greater tax break and a little financial savings in the early years when their expenses are the greatest. And it provides the town with larger payments in the outer years of the agreement, which is at a time when we're going to likely need those finances much more. And also, in the early years, some of that, as far as tax income to the town, is offset a little bit with the rather high building permit fees that we'll be receiving. So we thought that was ultimately a better arrangement and a better deal for the town from a purely dollar and cents point of view, we, the town, do make out a little better. For example, Moderna is estimated after the 10 years to have a savings of $1,405,000, and the town, $1,536,000. So it's slightly more beneficial to the town for a number of factors, and still benefits the company. They apparently liked that plan, they came back with their proposal to do that increment declining process. We brought the agreement to the Economic Development Committee, who reviewed it, discussed it, and thought it was very favorable, and we decided to recommend the plan that's before you to the board. I'd point out that the, some of the reasons, as I said earlier, there's no magic solution to how you come up with what the TIF agreement will be, it's what you think the value to the community is. We gave a lot of consideration to the fact that in their first year here, they've exceeded our expectations and their promises to the town. The town, through its Economic Development Committee, has a strategy to attract biotech firms, and they're high-paying jobs. We went out and got the town rated as a platinum-rated community. When we were doing that, Elizabeth Steele from the Biotech Council had advised us the companies were moving out to the suburbs, but mostly out along the Mass Pike Corridor, and we're choosing to develop into campus-like settings, which Moderna is now interesting doing. We were very fortunate to encourage Moderna to come here, a little further south than the normal patent companies have been taking, and we benefited greatly from that. We also, you know, wanted to continue to entice major professional businesses, so that the incentive there is that we are building a long-term commercial property tax base, which will bring property relief to the residential taxpayer. We also gave much consideration to, well, I just mentioned that, TIF's first-year successes that Moderna has exceeded, the employment hirings and the investment made. The development will produce approximately $800,000 in new building permit fees, will expand the local investments to other businesses, they just explained that they estimate they spent at least approximately $1,500,000 in the local communities, and if we're doubling the size of the footprint up there in operations, we, I don't know if we're gonna double that, but we're certainly gonna see an increase in that local investment. They're now, only been in this site a year now, and they're already now... They're now, only been in this site a year now, and they're already now, that they're established, sitting down with the schools and planning very interesting and beneficial programs and working in cooperation with the schools. And we just think the whole benefit to the community from the expanded tax revenue with this expansion, as I just mentioned, will still consider, still receive 100% on the existing property value that was reviewed with the assessor, who was confident that all these numbers are the right numbers, so we have his buy-in on the process. On the increased incremental financing portion of this, or increased asset value of the property, we're going to receive an additional $1,536,000 over the 10-year period. And if we combine that with the other Moderna property and the taxes anticipated, we're going to receive well over $13 million from this company, as well as all the high-paying jobs and other benefits, we just think it's a win for the town and a great investment, and therefore we strongly recommend it to the board. It was a four-to-nothing vote, the zero vote was, the fifth vote was, would have been Mr. Costello's, but as I mentioned, he recused himself from this matter, so we had a unanimous vote on this matter.
Thank you. Anything else from the other side of the table?
No, we hope you look favorably, and we thank, again, we thank the team for really expediting the process to meet the company's timeline.
Thank you.
Well, I want to thank you for your input, and I want to thank people from Moderna, as well as the Economic Development Committee, and our representative from the responsibility of the Chamber of Commerce.
Mr. Chairman.
Sir.
If I might, to put a form before the board for discussion and consideration, I'd like to move that we vote to recommend the town to town meeting tax increment financing plan and accord, agreement in accordance with the provisions of the Master of the Law's Chapter 59, Section 40, between the town of Norwood, Moderna TX Inc., and BR Norwood Owner LLC, and to approve the submission of Moderna TX Inc. ADIP Local Incentive Only application to the Massachusetts Economic Assistance Coordinating Council in accordance with the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 23A, Section 3A, and 3C.
Second.
On the motion?
Sir, on the motion.
Thank you. Just a couple of things. First of all, the, I'm delighted to see, by the way, my friend, Mr. Slater here, who is a member of the EDC, and Mr. Halkiotis, and Mr. O'Rourke, who are here to support this application. I do endorse it. I understand that the TIF, and this perhaps directed to Mr. Plasko, this particular TIF is a little more generous than the TIF we offered on the first one, but your justification, as I understand it, Mr. Plasko, can best be said as, they have exceeded their, they have exceeded the commitments they made with the first one. Is that, is that fair to say?
That's number one, and then all the other things I mentioned that we believe they bring to the community is.
Okay, very good. We're talking about, about a total number of jobs, perhaps within the next three to five years, of about 590 full-time positions, is that right?
Approximately.
Something like that. We don't know yet. Never mind the, the jobs that will be for construction and so forth, the temporary jobs in construction and so forth. All right, very good, thank you. You mentioned, by the way, being involved with the schools and the STEM program, and if I'm, is it okay, Mr. Chairman?
Sir.
Could you tell us a little bit more about your involvement with the school system in the town?
We'd be happy to. Actually, Tony's nice enough to introduce us to the superintendent of the Norwood Schools, and then also the principal of the high school, so we've had them out twice. They have a Innovation Pathways group of kids coming in, so they're coming into high school, 25 kids that they will work with to figure out what they want to do in, in life. They have a flagship partnership with Norwood Hospital, and they're also looking for another healthcare partner, and we're, we're the non-traditional healthcare, but they're, they're asking us to be a flagship partner, and so we're looking at things like internships and mentoring, and eventually scholarships for these, for these kids that are going through this program. And we're also looking at existing juniors, so we, we would wait to those students for our juniors and seniors, so a couple of years for that, but they also have a couple, they have students now that they would be interested in talking about next summer to do internships that are juniors and seniors now, so.
I mean, from my own perspective, that's probably more important than, than the money.
Yeah, we want to have that impact on the community.
Is that fair to say, Mr. Mazuko, that I say that?
Absolutely, work force of alibis is what we're all about, right? But when you think about it, we have a growing, cutting-edge biotech company right here in town, so sometimes it could be as simple as scientists from Moderna just getting in their car and driving five minutes to the high school and speaking to a high school class about what they do. And because biotech is generally a younger industry, you're going to have high school kids who are seeing people five and 10 years out of college and what they're actually doing, and then they can also set up a chance to go and look at it, they'll have programs where they can go and tour an actual facility and what they're doing. It's probably occasionally difficult to attract kids who want to study the hard sciences, I studied a soft science myself, but you have this great opportunity for kids who, when they're considering what to do, they now have a cutting-edge company right here in town that's going to work with them to show them what they're actually doing. I mean, this is the future of, of jobs, the top jobs that are out there anywhere in the country, if they're not in one of the big tech companies, they're in biotech and research.
Well, and the proximity, I mean, that's one thing, you know, you can go places to learn a lot of stuff, but they don't have to go far, and neither do you in here, and there will be a lot of people up there to teach them, as well as a part of their job. So, now, that's great, I, I, I wholeheartedly endorse the motion. I do want to thank our friends from the Economic Development Committee for their hard work in this, and thank you all as well for your hard work. I shall be happy to endorse this on the floor of town meeting, so, thank you very much.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, as far as Mr. Plasko and others' comments, you had me at Moderna, okay? I've been up close with your folks in the past, and I'm a man of not many words, and I look at basics a lot of times. On this, this TIF deal, as we, as I hotly endorsed previously, the first one, a lot of times I look at, what are you going to get, okay? And UTI, that's next door to you currently, they had plans to shut down, as of the point that they're going to shut down before you folks made any connections with them, and that was going to happen. So that building was going to be vacant. Buildings up there have been vacant for a long time. Over the other side, one that we own right now, ended up being vacant for a long time. And when that happens, of course, the people don't want to pay the high rate of real estate taxes that they were paying, they want to pay as low as they can, because there's nobody in the building. Well, I look at it very simply, what are we going to get, and we're going to get a whole bunch of money. Are we going to give a little credit? Absolutely, we are. But that's, that's for a regulated period of time of 10 years, and we're still going to keep the rest. We have a huge amount of money, I guess I can say that number, probably over $800,000 on building permits alone. I mean, that's tremendous, that's tremendous, that, the whole deal, I think, is tremendous. And, once again, I so hotly welcome the Moderna people to the table, I really do, and totally support you folks. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Howard. What my colleague said earlier, it's not necessarily about how much money is on the table here, it's about what you do for the town of Norwood. Economically, and I think Mr. O'Rourke can agree with me, it's going to be a big boom for the town economically, with restaurants and so on, and so on, and so on. People may rent apartments here, they may buy homes here, and so on, and so on. I think the long term, that's what really matters, economic development, the money to me comes second. I had been watching Moderna since they first came to Norwood through the media reports and stories, you're doing a fantastic job, I think even better than your own expectations over the last year, and I expect nothing but more of that in the future here in Norwood. I believe you will be a stable environment in our town, and I wish you the best of luck. So with that said, I have a motion on the table, stated by Mr. Plasko, and I have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Unanimous.
Thank you. Thank you for your support.
Thank you very much. Thank you, folks.
I want to thank everybody else for all their work, and I want to apologize for the lateness again. Thank you all. Good night, Tom. Okay, if we can, we'd like to get down to new business. I'll start with number one, Dutch Island Dairy Inc., DBA Daddy's Dairy. Would you like to step up, please? And if you could just introduce yourself for the benefit of the audience and the record.
I'm John Minahan, with Tracy Siegel today. Together, we own and operate Dutch Island Dairy, which is an ice cream shop. We currently have four locations in Braintree, Randolph, Brockton, and Stoughton, and we're excited about having our fifth location in Norwood Center.
I think, from listening to social media, a lot of people are excited here in Norwood also. Any questions from the board regarding this?
Mr. Chairman.
Sir.
Just want to, just want to let you know, and the board know, I did attend the planning board meeting last night when the applicants were there, I thought the conversation was quite, was quite substantive, and there was a mutuality about it, or a spirit of mutual cooperation on some of the things that the planning board was, was asking about and concerned about. I think it seemed to me that the resolution is in the offing on a couple of things. I think you're going back one more time, right?
Yeah, we, we already spoke with our sign company, and, and he's already created a new proposal that I think is, is more amicable to the town.
Okay. Do you, do you have an estimated time of opening?
We'd like to open the first or second week in October, all depends on, you know, some of the contractors and that kind of stuff.
All right.
Some of our equipment we're still waiting on, so.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. According to all the paperwork here, you have been signed off by the light department and by the building inspector, and so on, and so on. The only fly in the ointment I see here right now, other than the planning board itself, is that you have submitted paperwork to the Board of Health.
Mm-hmm. We actually met with, with the Board of Health today at our, at our site, went over some concerns that we both would have, and he has agreed that everything we have is in order.
Okay, so I think they have a formal meeting in the middle of this week.
Yeah, I'm not really sure how that exactly works.
Next week, rather.
Yeah, it was a handshake-type thing, and, you know.
I'm sure that'll verify.
We had a few things, yeah, so. We, we like to have an ongoing relationship with Board of Health in each town, it's an, it's an important part of running our kind of a business.
Very good, thank you. Any other questions from the board?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
Sir.
Having been known to be an ice cream connoisseur, I had to make sure you were worthy of this license, so I went over to Stoughton, and I'm happy to report that I will be voting for your license, and welcome to Norwood.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, you know, we can still approve this license, they just can't actually, well, it's not even a condition, they just, it's always a condition, they can't operate without the approvals of the Board of Health, or if they try to, they'll get closed down, but that doesn't prevent us from voting this evening, so I make a motion to, if your license has applied for. Second.
So I have a motion on the floor, and a second, to approve your request for a CV license, contingent upon positive vote, all around.
Sure.
Do you understand that?
Yes.
Any questions at all?
No, no questions.
On that?
Mr. Chair, just if I could share a brief story, the, the location in Randolph is, there used to be a Minahan's convenience store there, and having grown up in Randolph, I used to frequent that convenience store as a kid to buy candy by the, by the back room.
Oh, you grew up in Randolph?
Yeah.
My father recently passed away.
I saw that, sad to hear that.
Well, like I said earlier, I think a lot of people are just, I'm surprised it's going light out there now.
We like to, we like to generate excitement, especially with the young families in town. We tend to draw a lot of young families, we participate heavily in the community, we do fundraisers for schools, we do, we support local teams, basketball, softball, little leagues, all that kind of stuff. We've done fundraisers in Stoughton for, you know, Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts, Cub Scouts, that kind of stuff, so we pride ourselves on becoming an integral part of any community we're in.
Years ago, we had another ice cream store very close to yours, decks of the North Theatre itself, and people would go there in the afternoon, families would go there after dinner, and they'd go across to the common, and they'd sit in the lawn, and they'd enjoy their ice cream and everything else. I see that as a possibility in the future, where families can come together and have an ice cream cone, and so on, and so on.
We've already talked to the Department of Public Works about adding a couple of benches and small trash receptacles around the location, too, so.
The Public Works Department is very accommodating.
Very accommodating, yeah.
They just said they were very expensive. Can we get four or five? They're like, why are they talking around? I'm like, oh.
Wait till the money starts rolling, then you want to roll back plans. So I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous.
Good luck in your business.
Good luck in the future.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you for choosing Norwood.
Oh, thank you, thank you. You've had an excellent, great, great block everywhere with it, thank you.
When I lose some weight, I'll drop by.
We have fat-free stuff.
Do not encourage me.
Sorry about how your pants are going to fit in here.
Good night. Okay, number two, Laurie Italian.
Talanian.
Talanian. BMW Gallery, thank you for that. So many requests for a one-day wine malt beverage license on Thursday, October 17th, from 6:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. for a customer appreciation event located at 918 Boston Providence Highway, and again, that's the BMW Gallery.
Motion approved. Second.
I have a motion to approve and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Number three, Rhonda Freel, is that right?
Renunciation.
Rhonda Freel, 54 Ann Road, submitting request to use the town common on Saturday, October 19th, from 4:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. for photos after a wedding.
Motion approved. Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Number four, firefighter, paramedic, Paul Ronco, submitting request to hold annual Miles Felium 5K road race on Saturday, September 28th, at 10:00 a.m., starting at the Knights of Columbus Hall on Nickel Street. The route is the same as in previous years, and he is currently working with the Norwood Police Department to work out logistics.
Motion approved. Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Number five, Abraham Ilios, 145 Broadway, submitting application for a Class II, a Class II dealer's license, public hearing required.
Motion to set the hearing? Second.
I have a motion to set the hearing and a second. All in favor? Opposed? Unanimous. And just for clarification, that is at the Supreme Gas Station, basically across the street from the train station on Broadway, so as you know where it is.
Old Volkswagen deal.
Correct. Number six, the Bark Awards for 2019 have been determined, and if I could get a vote of the board to approve the list, the posting for the winners will be probably no later than Friday afternoon on the town's website, and checks are hopefully going to go out next week sometime.
Slower.
I have a motion to approve.
Second.
And a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. And again, by Friday afternoon, that information should be on our town website. Number seven, October 7th, 2019, special town meeting warrant for signature of the board.
Will we sign this warrant as presented?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to sign the special warrant for town meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Additional new business, Andrew Unsworth of 36 Everett Avenue, submitting request to hold a block party on September 14th, from 3:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. at the Block off Everett Street, Everett Avenue, I'm sorry, during that time on both ends.
Motion approved. Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Number nine, Mara Budrat, 42 Wilson Street, submitting request to use the bandstand on Sunday, September 29th, from 3:00 till 3:30 for a wedding.
Motion approved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Unanimous. Number 10, Grand Slam Restaurant Concepts, Norwood LLC, doing business as Jake and Joe's, submitting application for a change of manager from Gerard F. Brigario to Sonia Ramos.
Mr. Chair.
Sir.
I, I met this lovely lady at Norwood Day at their booth, and I was talking to her about checking licenses and all this stuff, and it was refreshing to hear her comments, the things that she's putting in place about, you know, younger people not getting, not getting alcohol, et cetera, et cetera, the problems that we've been having lately with licenses and everything, people checking them, and I make a motion that we approve her as a manager.
And just for everybody's certification, this is a management change, we will have to notify the ABCC, let them know there will be a management change. Any other questions from the board on that?
Second, a motion.
I have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Number 11, Valphini, Norwood Music Club, submitting request for a one-day AAB, all-alcohol beverage license, on Saturday, September 21st, from 6:00 p.m. until 11:00 p.m. at the Norwood Knights of Columbus, located at 572 Nickel Street.
Motion approved. Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Number 12, Father Gene Pierre Aubin, St. Mary's Parish in East Walpole, former of St. Catherine's, submitting request for a one-day all-alcoholic beverage license on Saturday, September 28th, from 6:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. at the Knights of Columbus, located at 572 Nickel Street.
Motion approved. Second.
I have a motion to approve and a second. All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Number 13, Christine Healy, DBA craft company, crafted company, submitting application for a one-day malt, wine and malt beer license for Saturday, October 26th, at the Norwood Space Center on Moore Street for a beer festival.
Motion to approve?
Second.
A motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Number one, under memoranda, Joseph A. Collins, General Manager's Office, submitting a report regarding the commuter, commuter rail service from Foxborough to the South Station and back and forth. It's a pilot program going from the South Station to Patriot Place, and they're going to try it out for one year, just for information this time.
Information to file? Second on the motion, Mr. Chairman?
Sir?
This is a, this is a memo and a report we received from, from Mr. Cooper, but it's, I mean, to Mr. Cooper from the MBTA. There is nothing for us to do on this now, right? This is just information only, correct?
Just playing the board, you know. I think, as you're aware, the MBTA or the commuter rail is expanding their service, so the, you can now, you'll be able to board the train, I believe, beginning in October in Foxborough. What it means for Norwood is there'll actually be a couple more stops at the Norwood stations. In total, there will be about 20 more trains running through town.
Twenty more?
Correct.
And there are about 24 now? And these are all going to be during the year round?
That's, that's total coming through, not counting what stops at Norwood. There'll be about two or three more stops in Norwood, which is a benefit they're taking the train in.
Through the town, it's 40 to 53. It looks, it's, so it's a, it's a 33% increase in the number of trains coming through.
That's incredible, because, you know, you say not stopping, but they're still putting down those things, stopping traffic, blowing those horns.
The Foxborough Service Pilot, and I quote, "will provide 10 additional outbound and 10 inbound trips." That's a total of 20 per day.
Right.
Monday through Friday. It'll last for one year.
And again, not all those stopping in Norwood.
Oh.
Yeah, okay.
So I have a motion for...
Just, it's a pilot program. They're going to, they're going to check.
Yes.
It's going to run for a year.
For one year.
Yeah, okay, all right. Thank you.
And we'll get to comment at the end of the year, I imagine.
I would imagine.
If the MBTA listens to anyone.
Yeah.
So, motion for information?
Yep.
In a second.
Already made.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Number two, Billy Inspector Mark Schubert, submitting building report for the month of August 2019.
Information to file?
Information for board members to file.
I have a motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. And with that said, we will go to the manager's update. Mr. Bazuko.
Thank you. Just one brief item. The yellow sheets, the board has a copy of them. They're not printed as of yet on yellow paper. That'll happen later in the week. They are ready to go. We're going to go do a final sort of table read and QA QC check tomorrow. So our goal is to get these out to town meeting members roughly a month ahead of the special, rather than trying to rush in with the yellow sheets a couple days before the meeting. So they'll go on the website probably late tomorrow or sometime Thursday, and then we'll have them out to town meeting members during this week, and then a warrant will follow up usually a few days after that.
That'll give town meeting members plenty of time to digest the information. If they have questions, they can bring them forward and get them answered prior to town meeting.
Absolutely. We'll likely do one or two public information sessions that we did prior to the last annual town meeting, where we just sort of go through the warrant and answer any questions folks may have.
When, Mr. Chairman, when do we need to vote on whether or not we endorse each article? Next week?
Mr. Plasko, I think we've talked about that. We can do it today, but...
Yeah, probably next week.
Next week gives us more time to...
Yeah, because we can get the...
Read over this information, anything else you already have in our minds.
So we can't just, so in this, in the draft yellow sheet, there's nothing about the selectmen endorse this or that?
Correct. The yellow sheet is just information on the articles and what they are. You're still free to take your positions. That should get printed on the warrant, since it is the selectmen's warrant. The yellow sheet is just, here's the information.
The warrant's already signed, so...
We usually, we usually indicate where the selectmen stand.
If we don't want to, if we don't want to do it just on the floor, we either hold this and incorporate it, or we do it separately. In the past, it's been part of this, if we had a particular position.
In the past, it's been a part of this. In the interest of time, do we want to do something different than that?
Do you want to discuss it next week? The whole warrant?
Would you need to get this out?
Well, we'd like to get it out. The information in the yellow sheet isn't going to change. If you want to include your recommendations, we, we could wait. If you'd like, we can actually get it out online and then update it when the selectmen's recommendations are on there, but that way, and then we'll just hold off to mailing it another week. But any town meeting member who wants to see the content, or any member of the public, the content's not going to change, it's just whether you want to add your...
Any other comment from the board?
It's another mailing, or maybe, you know, when the FinCom will send theirs out? Maybe we, if, maybe ours would not be so voluminous, it'd only be a page. In all likelihood, we could narrow down our comments, and maybe we can coordinate it, send it out when the FinCom sends out their, their recommendations on the particular money. You don't know when they're meeting yet, do you?
I want to say it's the 19th to the 16th, sometime in the next week and a half.
Yeah, so we could talk about it next Tuesday, and in the meantime, ask the manager to...
It's okay by me. I just don't want to hold you up, but at the same time, I don't...
Well, if you're okay, we'd like to at least get the yellow sheets online, so it's out there. I mean, what the warrant is, isn't going to change, and the, the sort of objective analysis of what is this and what isn't going to change.
So you'll think you'll have this mail before next Tuesday?
We can, we can hold it if you'd like.
No, but you're, you're, we're thinking you could get it out.
That was the goal.
Okay. You want to do that? We can add anything if we feel we want to, probably coordinate that with Mr. McCray and the Finance Commission.
All right, so you'll do the final, final reading tomorrow, proofread it one more time, make any corrections, and then go. And then if we want to send out anything thereafter, or publish anything thereafter one way or another, we can do that.
We can. And if you want, even though it is a slight change of process, you can do sort of a simple one sheet that has the FinCom and the board's recommendations on it. We approve this article, or we don't. That way, the, the public's getting the content as it was possible.
It's probably in the interest of time, it's probably the wise thing to do. This is a tighter time cycle, you know, timetable than usual, so. Okay, that's fine by me.
We could send out a sheet, have a sheet at town meeting, too.
Could do that, too. Okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you for your input.
You could hand them out.
Anything else, Mr. Manager?
No, sir.
Okay, well, if nobody has a problem with this, we're going to select news agenda. Mr. Plasko?
Nothing further, this is everything, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Mr. Howard?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a couple items. The first item I have is that the senior center has asked me, Carrie McCarthy has asked me to make note that the senior center in the fall has experts there to help us make our choices, our seniors, with our health insurance, and particularly the supplemental health insurance that most of us have. So having said that, they said that the time slots are filling up very fast, so if you want a slot to talk about your health insurance, please get by the senior center and take care of that. The second item I have is Norwood Day. Every year, Norwood Day is a joy to me. It seems like every ensuing year is even better than the last, if that can be possible. So I, I did manage this year to spend four hours on, on the, on the streets, on Washington and the side streets, at the 241 booths that were, were all staffed there. I did say hello to every booth, and talked to a lot of people, saw a lot of friends and former classmates on the streets of Norwood, because we had a gathering of our Class of 62 on Sunday, as it happens, so that was a real nice convenience. So you think you've seen it all and said it all, and then I had an incredible honor this year, absolutely incredible. I met a gentleman who is by far one of the most decorated veterans that we have at Norwood. And I didn't know his name before Norwood Day, but another, another friend of mine introduced me to him on, on the Norwood Day route. And this gentleman has received many awards when he was in Vietnam in the Navy. I know that he has received the Bronze Star, a Purple Heart, obviously for being wounded, and the Silver Star, which is the next award than the Medal of Honor, the Silver Star. And this man's name is Tim Flynn, and a Norwood resident, and probably all his life. And Tim, if you're listening, buddy, congratulations, and I love you. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Howard. I only have one thing to remind people of tonight.
Can I say something?
Yes, go ahead. You got another five more to say.
You got away with it, wasn't it?
I feel like I'm on a variety show here. No, just a couple of things, Mr. Chairman. I'll, then I, in this case, I'll keep it brief, because I took a lot of the time last week. The school system seems to be off to a pretty good start. Head counts are up in, at the high school, and at some of the elementary schools, it appears, and seems like in terms of transportation and delivery and so forth, we are, we are underway in, in good form for the Norwood public school system. If head count is up, meaning the number of students in the school system, I think overall that's a good thing. I just think more kids coming into your town, more families coming into your town is a good thing. More people making use of your school system is a good thing. So I'm happy to see that. And that'll be enough for tonight, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Is that a promise?
Promises are a threat.
Thank you. Okay, on a serious thought, I just want to remind people that 18 years ago, tomorrow morning, at approximately 9:00 a.m. in that area, this country suffered the worst terrorist attack it's ever seen, September 11th, 18 years ago. We lost nearly 3,000 people between three different locations. A plane crash, I believe, at the Pennsylvania Field, the Pentagon Building itself, and many, many people were lost in the Twin Towers in New York. I just ask people that never forget what transpired 18 years ago, and keep those 3,000 people and their families in your prayers over the next few days. And I thank you for that.
Mr. Chair?
Sir?
An addendum to that. One of the casualties on the American Airlines flight that day was a resident for many years in Norwood by the name of Sonia Popolone. She and her husband were dear friends of mine. That's all, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Anything else from the board?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
I have a motion to adjourn for the evening in a second, and we will reconvene again next Tuesday, September 17th, God willing. So thank you all for listening, and...
Aye.
We'll see you next week.